This meeting is being recorded.
Oh, and you're on mute.
All right, how's that sound?
Oh, good.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, okay, I'd like to call the committee of the whole of the village board to order at 6:48. Um, has this meeting been publicly noted?
It has been noticed in accordance with law.
That's great, and it looks like we have trustee Bachhorst, trustee Earthing, trustee Warren, trustee Stokran, and trustee Baldoff, with trustee Arnorfer being excused.
Correct.
And president McKay. Um, great, is there a mo- I just have one item on the agenda, which is the closed session matter of business, and so is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
And if, um, Arthur.
We have to make that.
If you could read actually the notice, that would be great.
I'm so lazy, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Um, okay, I apologize, I'm down a little bit, okay. So, um, I move to consider close, to consider going into closed session under the Wisconsin State, uh, nineteen eight eighty-five, one G to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral and written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Specifically, uh, East Capital Neighbors Association versus Village of Shorewood Board of Appeals, Milwaukee County case number two-one-CV-six-eight-six-zero.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by trustee Earthing, seconded by trustee Baldoff, um, is this a roll call vote?
Yes. And I'd be happy to do that. Um, trustee Bachhorst. Second.
I apologize, I didn't ask for any discussion.
Oh.
My mistake, any discussion? All right, we none. Um, now please call the roll, thank you.
Okay, trustee Bachhorst. Trustee Bachhorst.
Here. I'm sorry.
Yes, it's okay. I'll take that as the I. Trustee Earthing.
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokran.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
President McKay.
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero, and you'll adjourn into closed session at six fifty-one PM. I'm just gonna create your breakout room, and we're gonna pause this, and so you'll be moved over shortly. Okay, it's seven oh-nine PM, and we are back into open session.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So, motion to adjourn by trustee Bachhorst, and seconded by trustee Baldoff, all those in favor of adjournment? Or any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, it's great. Uh, we are adjourned, trustee Stokran was not a raise hand for discussion or for adjournment.
In favor of adjournment.
Okay, great, so, uh, we are adjourned at seven-ten, and we'll see you back at seven-thirty.
And you can stay. Yep, and this is the same link for the regular meeting, so if you just wanna pause it and mute, that's great too. See you guys in a little bit.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call the, um, meeting of the village board to order at seven-thirty PM. Um, thank you everyone for being here, and your patience and talent and your venue. Um, could you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bachhorst.
Here.
Trustee Earthing. Trustee Earthing.
I don't think.
I'll come back to him. Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Here.
Trustee Stokran.
Here.
Trustee Warren.
I'm picky here yet.
Oh, yeah. And trustee Earthing.
I guess, uh, there are four of us, so we do have a quorum. Okay, um, and has the, oh, here we go. Finish the roll.
Trustee Warren.
Uh, here. Sorry, I just lo- I just lo- I just clicked on.
Nope, that's great, trustee Earthing. President McKay.
All right, I'm sure. Aye, or yes, here. Great, so, um, and, uh, notice that the meeting has been noted, right? We covered that.
Posted in accordance with law.
And I just wanna, great, and I wanna welcome Clerk Carol here, who is, um, for the first time, who has joined us at meetings but is taking minutes for the first time. So, thank you, and thank you to manager Ewald for tuning in, um, on this special occasion while you're on vacation. We appreciate your flexibility to go through the transition. So, item four is a special order of business, um, and we have one of those this evening. It's presentation of Tree City and Growth Awards. And it looks like, uh, oh, trustee Warren, I mean trustee Earthing shares here, but not him, so we'll wait till he's in the chair. And then you can, oh, hands, okay. So, seven thirty-two. Great, so I'll hand this over to Director Vichy.
Thank you, I'm actually gonna toss it right over to Kim Sebastian, who is, um, a forester with the DNR. Kim?
Oh, Kim, we can't hear you. You might, you might be muted, or your volume might be down. I don't see you muted on our end, so, no. Now try it. No, um.
Is, is the volume on your computer up? When I have this problem, it's usually because I've turned the volume all the way down.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Oh.
Oh.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was gonna work.
Yeah.
I wonder, can you, we could take this item, like after consent agenda or something, and you could go out and come back in? Or try muting and unmuting? Can I try muting and unmuting? Okay. No. We keep here. Maybe off camera? Wanna try off camera with unmuted?
That's not the issue, I think if anything, she'll have to start over, start, restart her computer, or figure out, you know, the output. Usually you can go to settings and output, and figure out where the actual audio output is, is going, and, um, and that probably would be helpful.
Oh. I wonder if she's connected to Bluetooth and does not.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I said earlier, I think that's, that happens quite a bit, where there's like a earbud or something connected through Bluetooth, and it's trying to look for that. So, going to settings and figuring out what your input and output are, is, is the best, best thing to do.
Okay. Would it be possible, um, do we need to make a motion to take this item, um, later, or can we just move on to consent agenda and come back?
You can just ask for unanimous consent.
So we don't need a motion. Oh, okay, is there unanimous consent to take the consent agenda and then come back to this item? Yeah, okay. Any opposed? Okay, thank you for that. Um, so item five, consent agenda, um, are, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have trustee Baldoff with the motion, and trustee Bachhorst with the second. Um, any discussion?
Oh.
I will, I'd like to pull, um, item five C. I'll make a note myself. And I think that's all. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, what letter was it? B as in boy, or C as in cat?
Uh, C as in cat.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, um, all those in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye, or show a hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, trustee Warren, are you in favor?
Yeah, I raised my hand just probably a little bit too early for you to see.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I think I was off camera. Okay, motion, um, motion carries to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five C, um, six-zero. All right, before we move on to item six, items to move from the consent agenda, let's check with, um, Mr. Sebastian to see if the sound is working.
Is it working now?
Yay, all right, welcome.
Yay.
So we're gonna take, we'll go back to, for a presentation of Tree City and Growth Awards, welcome to Shorewood.
Thank you so much, sorry about that little, uh, sometimes, uh, things just don't go exactly as planned, but thank you very much. So, um, I really appreciate you inviting me to participate in your meeting tonight. Um, my name is Kim Sebastian, and I am here on behalf of both the Department of Natural Resources and the Arbor Day Foundation to present the Village of Shorewood with your twenty-six consecutive Tree City USA Award. And you don't get that lightly, it's by planting, protecting, and caring for trees in the village, especially along your streets and trees, uh, along your streets and parks, and you've really shown what an important role that trees play in the village and your commitment to maintaining that quality of life in your community. Good communities don't make themselves. Um, thank you for supporting trees, for civic beautification, for habitat, for songbirds, and wildlife cover, for building soil, improving air, fighting pollution, conserving energy, decreasing stress, and improving the health of your residents, all by defining that community character and spirit that you love about your community. You met four standards in order to receive the Tree City USA Award, and that is a tree board, or department, an ordinance, a tree budget of spending at least two dollars per person on your tree care program, and an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. You've shown others this commitment as well, and I also wanna say congratulations on not only your Tree City USA Award, but a Tree City USA Growth Award, which is really going above and beyond, and truly growing your program. Trees are really one of those things that are the most understated vehicles to help address some of the society's challenges that we have. But you get it, in Shorewood, you understand that, and I just wanted to say congratulations on behalf of both the DNR and the Arbor Day Foundation. Thank you for that high level of tree care, for the cooperation and partnership that you have, not only with surrounding municipalities, but with state agencies, with organizations, with nonprofits, and the ability that you have to share that knowledge. Shorewood is really a great community, and has so many great staff and resources that we oftentimes will, um, talk with you to see some of your experiences, and some of the programs, and some of the advancements that you're making. So again, on behalf of the DNR and the Arbor Day Foundation, um, in twenty-twenty, you are joining one hundred and eighty-nine other communities in the state of Wisconsin that are receiving a Tree City USA Award. You're also joining an elite group of that growth award communities. Congratulations on twenty-six years, on that twenty-six year achievement as a Tree City USA community. I'm here to present you with a national award as a Tree City USA and Growth Award community, and to wish you a happy twenty-twenty Arbor Day. So here's the Tree City USA plaque, and I'd like to say congratulations on that award, and thank you very much for all of the work that you do, and the care that you provide to trees in the community.
All right, and thank you to our incredible staff who works very, very hard, um, to help us reach those goals, and to our citizen committees and residents who appreciate it as well.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for inviting me, and thank you, Leanne, for the great work that you do in the community, and the staff that you have are really barn-on, really great, and have that technical expertise, the knowledge, and the love of, and care for trees in, in Shorewood.
Can I piggyback on that, Kim?
Yes, please.
Because I remember when I first started, um, I, I had known Leanne previously in, in my career, and then kind of reconnected with her, and when she took me on this tour of public works, someone showing me some different things, her, Pat, many of you maybe don't know it, because trees is, you know, trees is a big part of our operations, and it can be a stressor as well. Um, but she just has a really sincere passion, um, for trees and some of the, in addition to all the other work that she does. But she, um, it's really just, it's a labor of love, so thank you, Leanne.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to piggyback on that, thank you, Leanne, for, for just all your hard work and your energy and everything that you put into this community. You, you do not have an easy task in Shorewood here, and, uh, your dedication to trees and to working with green infrastructure is, is just, is incredible, so thank you so much for, for everything that you do for Shorewood, and, uh, all that energy you put into our trees.
Thank you, um, thank you to the board for the support that you've given our department, and, um, the, the resources and the ability to really grow and make our forestry operation, you know, first-rate among the North Shore, and, and, and definitely one of the premier operations in the area. Um, your, your support is not unnoticed, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you, Kim.
It's important to savor, yeah, it's important to savor and celebrate the win, so if there are any other, um, comments, um, recognition that would like to be shared, or if there's none. Trustee Stokran.
I would like to echo the comments, and I think it's just was incredible when we saw, uh, the idea that some, we could lose a lot of trees on Lake Drive. It was amazing to see the community response, uh, which just shows how important it is to the community, and obviously, we can only do what we can do with the DPW's lead on this, so, um, it's, it's a nice wedding of interests and talents and skills and passion. Thank you, where can we put this so everybody can see it?
On the front of the village manager's memo, and then.
I meant the plaque.
Oh, the plaque, I'll let Leanne make that call.
Well, um, you know, it'll, it'll join the others on our wall, so, thank you.
And, yeah, and I won't mention any names, but we even have some, um, rogue tree planters in the community that do it under the cover of darkness. So, we're, we're exceeding any type of tree programming that, that is on our budget. All right, well, thank you very much, everyone, um, have a good rest of the evening, Kim, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. Now moving on to, um, item six, item to move from the consent agenda, I remove five C, consider MMFC maintenance covenant for twenty-twenty-one Green Alley installation. The only reason why I pulled this is that you might have noticed that the memo was mistitled, and so I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that. Leanne and I exchanged an email today to confirm that. Um, I think there's no, uh, reason why we can't move forward. Um, with the memo, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge it. So with that, I would move to approve the, um, MMFC maintenance covenant for twenty-twenty-one Green Alley installation.
So moved.
All right, a motion by President McKay, seconded by trustee Earthing, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, um, say aye, show a hand.
Aye.
All right, motion carries six-zero, thank you very much. Um, moving on to item seven, public hearings, there are none this evening. Um, item eight, citizens to be heard, these are, um, citing this for matters not on the agenda, or being heard later this evening. Um, if citizens do not wish to stay. And is there anyone here this evening who would like to be heard? You can raise your hand or unmute yourself. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. So, moving on, item nine, new business, nine A, consider revocation of, excuse me, resolution twenty-twenty-dash-twelve, extending the declaration of a public health emergency in response to COVID-nineteen coronavirus. Manager Ewald.
Well, located within your packet is the, is the resolution, um, and the revoking, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-dash-twelve, um, which extended the declaration of public health emergency in response to COVID-nineteen. As we've discussed, um, before, we, we sent out notices to those restaurateurs who had previously, um, reserved some curbside pickup for their operation to notify them that the lifting of this, um, resolution, or the revocation of the resolution will then, in effect, remove their curbside pickup locations that were in effect during COVID-nineteen. One other item I just wanna note is that there have been multiple, um, different discussions relative to the policy for hybrid meetings. My apologies, I did not list that within the scope of this agenda item this evening, and so therefore will not have that open up for discussion, but we'll, we'll bring that forth to you again on April fourth. Trustee Earthing.
But, you know, uh, just curious, you brought up a removal of curbside pickup, have you, have you gotten any feedback from the businesses about that? I know, you know, for instance, Collectivo is somebody that actually tried to make their curbside permanent, and, um, so I would assume that we might be hearing from some of those businesses.
I did not hear any feedback from them, I also invited them, um, to also raise any of their feedback and bring their experience to see how that went to the meeting on North Oakland Avenue, um, because the design parameters and the, the spaces that they're using are curbside or public parking. Um, so, you know, I also invited them to share any feedback that they may have in that avenue as well, and have not heard any.
Sweet, well, I, I'd be ready to make a motion if, if you'd accept that. Uh, okay, so, I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two-dash-twenty-five, revoking the declaration of a public health emergency in response to the COVID-nineteen coronavirus, and update policy thirty-two, conducting hybrid and video-recorded, recording public meetings.
We would actually wanna have that, um, not include the update the policy, because it's not.
Okay, that's right, good point, I, I apologize about that, so I will, um.
Oh, no problem.
Okay, so I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two, oh. Yeah.
I'm sorry, is it, is it to revoke twenty-twenty-dash-twelve? Okay, so we're not approving the resolution, we are revoking the resolution, if you don't mind making that change.
Oh, that's great, no, thank you.
But hang in there, you're gonna get it.
I move to revoke resolution twenty-twenty-two-dash-twenty-five, revoking the, does that still make sense?
I know, it's, it's a tongue twister, right? We're approving a resolution twenty-twenty-two, and to revoke the resolution twenty-twenty-dash-twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
If somebody else, you know, somebody else would like to make, there you go, trustee Stokran, you can make that resolution, I, I'm lost.
With President McKay's approval?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two-dash-twenty-five, revoking the declaration of a public health emergency in response to the COVID-nineteen coronavirus.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, motion by trustee Stokran, seconded by trustee Warren, any discussion? Hearing none, oh, trustee Baldoff.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, you know, I'm gonna support this, and I think this is the right, um, direction for us to take, um, even though, you know, COVID is not gone, and, you know, signs point to the fact that unfortunately, um, a new variant might be, might be coming, but I, you know, I have been very encouraged by the steps that we're still seeing residents take to, to keep one another safe. Um, you know, with our schools going to mask optional, uh, for the rest of the year, I've still noticed a lot of kiddos wearing masks, um, which is great, you know, anything we can do to make sure we're, uh, slowing the spread is, is really important, especially for people who are immune compromised. Um, so I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the work everyone's done to, you know, have Shorewood in a place where we're able to remove our declaration at this point, and I know that if things take a bad turn, we'll be ready to, to jump back in and, and do the work again. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Stokran.
I just wanna say that I hope everybody can celebrate with something bubbly, that we're doing this, you know, in a safe manner, and I just have to thank the staff, because I remember, uh, like a year ago from now, thinking we've come through this, and, um, as a new trustee, the village, village staff totally led us through this, and I had, we, in a very able, competent, calm manner, in some, and there were a lot of really tough questions about enforcement and different, you know, with the mandates, and, um, it's just, it's a credit to manager Ewald, how she did this for us.
Thanks, but it's a, it takes the village. Not just on Courtney, but it really does. Everyone was in it, thank you guys for hanging with us, and I'm really looking forward to being in person with all of you, and four of you for the first time, so it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be good.
Yeah, I am too. All right, um, and just a quick note, you know, we do need to take this measure, you know, legally, because of the, um, judiciary does expect us to be in person, if, if it's possible, um, so any businesses that come forward with requests for changing, you know, parking regulations to, um, continue practices that they feel are beneficial in this new day and age and business model, um, that will just be taken up separately, or, uh, we will hear those and, and consider. Um, so, with that, it'll be a roll call vote. Have to use the reservation.
Trustee Earthing.
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokran.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Bachhorst.
Yes.
President McKay.
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you, um, item nine B, consider award of contract for twenty-twenty-two alley reconstruction program, Director Vichy.
Thank you, um, your packet this evening includes, um, a, a summary of the bids received for the twenty-twenty-two alley project. Um, you'll note, it's a, it's a significantly larger project than we have ever done, um, that was due in part to some early planning that pushed, um, some of our infrastructure projects, um, into double programs to account for the years that are essentially, um, taken up by the Southeast Area Combined Sewer Projects. So this would be, um, you know, that, that doubling up of the project. Um, when staff was working with the engineer to develop the bid structure, um, we included several alternates, and primarily that was to provide budgetary flexibility, um, I think, you know, every-
Um, I think, you know, every everybody has experienced some of the um uncertainty in in commodity pricing. Um, and certainly construction is no difference, um and and we had a pretty good idea that that prices were going to be relatively unpredictable. Um, so we we created a base bid and then added um four alternates um for alleys that could or could not be constructed based on villages, um the village board's determination um and how how the the bids received lined up with the funding available. So um you'll note there are a total of fourteen alleys that were designed as a part of this program. Nine, well, ten of those would be included in the base bid. Um, and and four of the alleys were identified as alternates, so um as you know, the the board can, if the board chooses to make an award, it must award the base bid. Um, then it can award any or none or any combination of the the four alternates. As mentioned in the memo, three of those alternates, well, um, two of the alternates were selected because they have relatively good pavement conditions um in comparison to the others. Um, the these alleys were based on ratings. Um, and at the time the program was put together, there was an expectation that pavements would um would age relatively consistently. Um, that really did not turn out to be the case in some of these, so so two of the alleys are in relatively good condition, um and in staff's opinion and the engineer's opinion still have several years of life left, um and and we believe that that delaying their reconstruction is is probably the most financially prudent thing to do. Um, like I said, we have some years of life that we've already paid for, and and I believe um we we can get some return on those to defer their construction. Um, one of the alleys is intended to be a green alley, um and that was really included um to provide some flexibility in case some of the green funding um wasn't at the level perhaps that that we we had access to or were hoping for. Um, the fourth alternate is alley ten, which is um at the corner, essentially the northeast corner of Stoll and Capital. Um, it's directly adjacent to and and provides um access to uh a proposed development in that location. Um, the alley is in relatively poor condition. However, given unknown construction schedules and the impact of construction on the potentially new pavement, staff does not feel that that it would be appropriate to reconstruct that alley this summer. Um, we think it's it's far better to defer that work until after that project. Um, if it continues to go forward is completed. So um it is our recommenda, it is staff's recommendation after review of all the bids um that the board award the base bid on an alternate one, an alternate one is alley one um and is intended to be and was designed as a green alley. Um, so the the suggested motion this evening um in includes that. Um, there is a secondary motion just to so that it's very clear going forward. Um, where staff is suggesting that the board memorialize um its intention to use two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of MMSD green solutions funding, um that does not cover um all of the green infrastructure costs on the project. However, as you know, um any stormwater enhancements or improvements would be considered eligible through ARPA funding. Um, and so staff suggests that the balance um of those green of the funding the green infrastructure funding um could be offset with um the ARPA funds that the village has in reserve. I should mention that the low bid was provided by LaLonde Construction. Um, the most recent project I believe that LaLonde did in the village was Capital Drive in twenty ten. Um, prior to that, they did um the Oakland Avenue. I forget, I'm sorry, I forget the exact title, but in in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, they did the streetscape work on Oakland Avenue. Um, um prior to that, they had done road programs, but um have not really done anything in the village in the last ten years or so. That they are considered to be a low and responsible bidder.
All right, thank you for that presentation and all that clarification. Um, any questions or a motion followed by discussion? Trustee Sofran.
Uh, so I was just trying to do the the math and LaLonde base bid and alternate one. Is that in the suggested motion with the first two bullet points? So if I'm looking if I'm looking at on page seventy seven of the packet, the one point one three five with the alternate of one hundred and fifty eight thousand.
You I I see what you're saying. Um. I apologize, I thought I had gone over these numbers four different times, but um.
But that's the one we want, right? We want the one one three five four fifty and the one fifty eight eight seventy five ninety.
You are correct, so the base bid is correct in the table, it is not in the motion.
Okay, so I could just fix that and then um I would just need a different total, right? Do I need to put the engineering and design number in there too, though?
You do not, that contract has already been awarded. I provided that just so that you understand. Um, as of now, what are the known total project costs? Um, but that does not have to go in the motion, that has already been awarded.
Okay. Uh, so if the president is ready.
Yeah.
Do you and then trustee Stokbrand, do you need a new total? I can.
Uh, well, I will just, yeah, is is the new total one three nine 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 one one point thirty? Oh, I'm sorry, that's, no, I'm sorry, I added in the engineering. My new total is one two nine four three two six point thirty.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
According to my calculator.
That's two of us. So if if the president is ready. Uh, I move award a unit price contract for the twenty twenty two alley can alley reconstruction program to LaLonde contractors as follows. Base bid in the amount of one million one hundred thirty five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents. And alternate one in the amount of one hundred and fifty eight thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars and ninety eight cents. For a total bid award of one million two hundred and ninety four thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars and thirty cents.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, uh, motion by trustee Sofran, seconded by trustee Baldoff. Well done on that, getting it out there and correct. Um, any discussion? I really appreciate all the thought that went into um the background on this and the presentation and also preparing all the alternates. Um, and I think it was great thinking on part of previous boards to look at consolidating, but it's also a nice thing when you realize that you're ahead of schedule and you can let some things go. All right, if there's no further discussion, um this will be, let's do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
President McKay.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Excellent, thank you. Um, item nine C, consider utility utility easement for fourteen oh nine East Capital Drive Stormwater Storm Sewer Installation.
Um, I apologize, I'd like to apologize again for the error in the memo. Um, but I would ask to call your attention to the the second suggested motion related to the use of ARPA funding for the green infrastructure. Was that incorp? Is is that the board's desire?
Oh, I apologize, you're right, we did not do that second motion, thank you, no, that's uh trustee Sofran.
Are you ready?
Yes.
I move that two hundred and eighty thousand dollar of dollars of MMSD green solutions funding be applied to the twenty twenty two alley project green infrastructure costs with any balance to be funded through the village's ARPA grant balances.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, motion by trustee Sofran, uh, seconded by trustee Warren, thank you so much for calling, for kicking that. Um, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
President McKay.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, now we can move on to by nine C, correct? Uh, consider that utility easement for fourteen oh nine East Capital Drive Storm Sewer Installation.
Thank you. Um, so you'll you'll note from the previous items, um the previous item, excuse me, that the alley that serves um the fourteen hundred block of Capital Drive, um which you access from the thirty nine hundred block of Morris. Um, it will there there is um a proposed easement in your packet for that this evening. Um, the the alley itself provides some significant challenges related to drainage. Um, there is, you'll, if you can picture it in your head, there's quite a bit of a slope there from Morris um down toward Culvers. Um, when in fact, the sewer, the the sewer that we, the existing sewer is out on Morris and water typically doesn't go uphill without quite a bit of assistance, so um the most efficient way to address that is actually to create um an an easement through the fourteen oh nine property um and connect some new storm storm sewer infrastructure that is proposed for that Pinedale Alley um and connect that out to Capital Drive. Um, in fact, the the property owner at fourteen oh nine, we've had some discussions with them over the last year. Um, they'd like to do some drainage improvements to their property as well, and as such, we're very amenable um to, you know, to this discussion. Um, I do not have a signed easement from them as of this moment, but have been verbally assured um that they are um on board with the the version that you have in your packet, um which isn't the first version, but um it I believe it is the final version. Um, just a few items to note. Um, the the that storm sewer infrastructure will be installed as a part of the alley project. Um, the village contractor will install install, excuse me, um that pipe that will run north south between the alley and Capital Drive through the fourteen oh nine property. Um, we will provide trench restoration, but any asphalt restoration will be the responsibility of the property owner. Um, the easement also allows them one connection to that pipe. Um, and their other um private plumbing will will make various connections throughout their property, um but then there'll be one connection made to this pipe. Um, the new easement does actually will encroach on a a sign area, a monument sign that the property has at the northeast corner. Um, and so the the easement does specifically note that at any point in the future, if we need access to that storm sewer infrastructure, um the village is not responsible for the restoration of that sign or any decorative elements related to the sign.
Right, are there any questions or is there a motion? Trustee Sofran.
Oh, I just, so Leanne, this is all underground, this is, there'll be no pretty bio swale or anything, this is.
It no, um, because in fact, it goes right through their parking lot, so um you you will, when we're done, you won't know it's there.
Thank you. I'm ready to make a motion if.
That'd be great, okay.
I move approval of the declaration of easement allowing the Village of Shorewood access for the purpose of maintaining municipal storm sewer at fourteen zero nine East Capital Drive.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Sofran, seconded by trustee Warren, any discussion? All right, being none, um, let's do a roll call vote, vote please.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
President McKay.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Great, thank you. Um, nine B, consider award of contract for Capital Drive pavement marking, direct to by book.
Thank you. Um, you'll you'll recall that last year we had a similar project. Um, and bids came in um significantly higher than expected, and and at that point, the board um determined that it would, actually, I believe it was only one, that we would reject that bid and attempt to rebid the project this year, um which we have done. The the markings that currently exist were installed when Capital Drive was reconstructed in twenty ten. Um, the current marking material is a thermoplastic tape. Um, I don't think it it was a relatively new product at the time, um and the state elected to use it on this job. I don't think it um wore um aged quite as well as any one had hoped. Um, and and unlike paint, um, it does require its complete removal before any mark, new markings can be placed over the top. Um, so that why, that's why this is a bit of a different project and different type of bid than the normal marking that we do as a maintenance project every year. Um, this does include both the removal of the old material and the placement of a new. Um, but in this case, it will be paint, not a tape material. Um, so the low bid was provided by Crowley Construction. Uh, the village has contracted with Crowley for maintenance work um since well before I started in this position, and we all know that's probably, that's a long time, so um no concerns at all about um their work or working with them. And the the bid, including the alternates, um did come in well under um the funds that have been allocated in the twenty twenty two capital budget, so um staff recommends award of the contract to Crowley.
Great. Um, are there, is there a motion or a question? Trustee Sofran.
Uh, just as a point of information going forward, then if we need, I mean, when when the tape started to come up, we couldn't really fix it, right? I mean, I'm just wondering going forward now, we we all, we do our own painting, right? Or do we contract that out? It can be just.
We contract that out and so.
And when this paint starts to fail, we can just include it as part of our regular maintenance for.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Trustee, I think.
Uh, so Leanne, between all the alternates, uh, what's what's your recommendation? Um, are you recommending base plus plus alternates?
I'm sorry, we we are recommending both alternates. Um that the first alternate is the removal and marking of stop lines. We called that out separately just again to provide budget flexibility, but um you picture a stop line is the perpendicular bar as you approach a stop sign, um indicates where cars should stop. Um, the the second alternate is the removal and marking of crosswalk transverse lines. So so what that is about is um the decorative brick paver crosswalk um that cross the the side streets to Oakland Avenue, I'm sorry, to Capital Drive. So these are the the crosswalks that um go um laterally from east to west. So for example, um I believe New Hall has one. Um, so it would be the crosswalk that crosses New Hall at the Capital Drive intersection.
There's also, so Morris and Capital, is that? There's also so Morris and Capital, is that a?
That would be another excellent, that would be an even better example. So those are paver crosswalks. The the transverse line is something that we have added to provide additional noticeability, safety, attention to drivers and pedestrians. And and that transverse line is located on the edge of each side of that paver crosswalk. It just draws additional attention, provides some reflectivity in the evening hours. So that that's what alternate two is. And as I mentioned, the base bid and both alternates come in well under the the budget that was allocated for this project. So staff is recommending the base bid and both alternates.
Great. I can, I can make a motion to. You're right. So I moved that a unit price contract be awarded for the 2022 East Capital Drive pavement marking replacement to Crowley Construction as follows. Base bid in the amount of $107,935 and no cents. And alternate one in the amount of $14,625 and no cents. And alternate two in the amount of $7,245 and no cents for a total unit price award of $129,805 and no cents.
Second.
All right, trustee. Okay. So motion by trustee Ursink, second by trustee Sopran. Any discussion?
One final question for Leanne. Are we now done with the icky sticky tape from the State Department of Transportation, or do we have more somewhere else?
Um, I I think there may actually be some additional tape that would mark bike lanes on Capital Drive. But it is, I mean, this is certainly the largest chunk of the work that needs to be done.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'll just make a comment that I had. The letter from Stan that's included in the packet has some interesting language, so I just asked Director Bushwick, do you know if it was typical or anything that we needed to be concerned with? And she said, no, it's very standard and has been committed in the past. So any other discussion? All right, seeing none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Backhorse.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustees do brand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
President McCag.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
All right, number, item nine, we consider award of contract for 2022 sewer lining program, which I have to admit is one of my favorites. Director Bushwick.
As you know, we do an.
It's preventing I and I. It's great.
Right? It's very exciting, very exciting stuff. Yeah. We do a sewer lining program every year. Most recently, our our lining programs have been essentially for the prevention of I and I. By definition, there is no I and I in the combined sewer area. However, we found it to be a useful tool to preserve infrastructure and and make minor repairs and and add some structural integrity to smaller combined sewer pipes. So we've only, we only received one bid this year. And I suspect that that is not going to be unusual in the coming years. Some of the players who had previously provided bids to us in the past are are moving out of the cured in place pipe business. Visu Sewer is by far the largest in the area, and and they remain in business. Normally, we'd be very concerned with one bid. However, the the bid was actually under the engineer's estimate. So I'm pretty comfortable saying that, you know, the fact that we had only one bidder didn't appear at all to increase or to impact prices. So as mentioned, Visu Sewer has done many of our lining projects in the past. And and staff is very comfortable recommending the award of this year's contract to Visu Sewer.
Excellent. Any questions or a motion? Trustee Sopran.
I move award of a unit price contract for the 2022 sanitary sewer lining program to Visu Visu Sewer in the amount of $129,615.25.
Second.
Second. Okay.
All right, motion by trustee Sopran, second by trustee Backhorse. Any discussion? Trustee Sopran.
I'd just like to say, you know, maybe the market will self-correct and and another company will enter the enter the field, which would be better. But you know, it's it's nice to see the bid is lower. And I think we saw another bid that was lower this year that DPW took the effort to go out for a second time. And so it all looks, looks better for budget time. Thank you.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you. All right, if there isn't any further discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorse.
Yes.
President McCag.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And nine F, consider award of contract for 2022 manhole rehabilitation project. A second favorite.
Thank you. So as you know, the last several years, we have also done manhole lining projects. Again, with dual benefits, one being a significant reduction in influent infiltration in the separated sewer area. And a secondary benefit also being to providing some structural integrity, particularly to some of these structures that are several plus decades old. So we did receive multiple bids for this project. You'll note on the summary table that two of them were deemed to be invalid. Typically, on a public bid, there are certain requirements that a contractor must abide by. One is the submission of a bid form. A second could be the acknowledgement of any addenda. An addenda would be any type of change to information that was presented or clarification. A third is they have to require a bid bond, which essentially provides the village assurance that the contractor has the wherewithal to do the job. If they are unable to start or complete the job, the contractor will typically forfeit that bid bond to the village. The two that were deemed invalid, one did not submit the required bid bond. And the other, I believe, did not acknowledge all of the addenda on the project. So therefore, those bids are not complete and cannot by law be considered by the village board. So that leaves the expeditors as the low bid on the project. We don't have recent experience with that company. But certainly, they do qualify as what would be termed a responsible bidder based on their experience working in other locales. So we recommend the award of the contract to the expeditors.
All right, thank you. Any questions or a motion? For the.
I can make a motion. Okay, so I moved to a reward of a, I moved to a, I move award of a unit price contract for the 2022 manhole rehabilitation project to the expeditors, Inc., in the amount of $50,685 and no cents. Relevant project dates as outlined in the DPW 2022 work plan are outlined below. Official notice 2/23/22 to 3/22/22. Open bid, March 9, 2022. Contract award, March 21, 2022. Project management and communication plan, April 18, 2022. Estimated anticipated construction, 2022 TBD contractor schedule.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Ursink, second by trustee Sopran. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustees do brand.
Aye.
Trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Backhorse.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
President McCag.
Yeah.
Motion carries six zero.
Great. Thank you very much. That concludes our new business for this evening. Thank you very much, Director Bushwick. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Assistant Director Colt. Moving on to item 10, report to village official, 10A, village president. The ICC meeting materials from March 14 are in the packet. There was some uncertainty on how to move forward with convening the racial equity and inclusion committee. So I am working through the bylaws to see if I need to present a resolution with membership of the committee. And I'm working with the county corporate council office on that. There was a presentation by Mobilize, which used to be the regional transit council, I believe. They are under new funding change. They ask for interest in participating in the board of directors meeting, which I expressed interest in. I will attend that and I'll report back to the group. And if there are further opportunities for us to participate with that entity, I know that we're very committed to transit up in this area. An update on canoe kayak launch, park bench donation. As you'll recall, we just awarded a contract for the canoe and kayak launch in Hubbard Park. There was a stone bench that was part of the design that we didn't include in the approved motion. Afterwards, upon reflection, I I made a joke that I would, you know, Mike Maher would be excited that we awarded the contract since he was a big advocate for this project for many years. I reached out to him. He was very, very excited. And then I thought that the bench and also the trustees during that discussion that night mentioned how benches are often donated. And so it came to me that I would really like to, I'm sure that there are people in the community that would like to fundraise and donate a bench in Mr. Maher's honor, as he was a former trustee for many years and advocated for the Greenway, the Greenway Trail. Still on that board and was also a great steward of the Shorewood Park. So I just reached out to staff to see if that would be a possibility to purchase the, if the funds were raised, that they could be used to purchase that bench and have it installed as part of the project to save that cost. And then the village could accept that donation at that time, if that is required as part of our policy. The Shorewood Foundation does have a donation program, which some of you may be aware of. And it would go through there. So that's what I have at this point. I don't have any further information about the cost or anything like that. But it's a, it's an outside, it would be a community fundraising project and not part of a board budgetary decision. So if there are any questions about that, please forward them via email to Rebecca and Muteon, figure out if there's any procedures that need to come next. But otherwise, I think it'll be all outside of board process. That's all I have. 10B, village reports to trustee.
Thank you. I would like to note that Sunshine Week was last week, March 13 to 19. This began in 2005. It's a nonpartisan nonprofit national initiative begun by the American Society of News Editors, now the News Leaders Association, to promote a dialogue about the importance of open government and freedom of information. I could have been a better leader by introducing a resolution supporting openness in a timely manner. I hope to do better next year. I do hope to work on efforts at the village level to increase transparency. And I hope we can digitize the village minutes and the building documents by the end of 2022. And I hope my fellow trustees will join me in this effort aided by staff. I'll provide this in writing to clerk Carol for the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports from trustee? All right, village manager.
No report at this time.
Okay, it looks pretty sunny where you are. Any item 11, future items for consideration? Oh, I have one. Let's see, to consider update of the hybrid meeting policy. Is that the right name of that that was? So that is just a sort of housekeeping item. So I guess I make a motion to put the consideration of updates to the hybrid meeting policy on the April 4 agenda.
Second.
A second by trustee Backhorse. Any discussion? All those in favor.
Can I just get a reminder when, sorry, just need a reminder when we are planning to meet in person. I think we discussed it last, last meeting. And it just slipped my, so the next, the next meeting or after spring break, we plan on meeting in person, correct?
Yeah, April 4.
Wow, what do I need to know for that? I mean, do I bring snacks? Do I water? What, can I order pizza?
Where do we go? What do we do?
I mean, do I come early? Do I?
The newest trustees always provide the food.
Deck of cards? I mean, so maybe we can have a brief, a brief on what, what to do when coming to village hall for a meeting, because I do not know.
I would be happy to provide you with some Cliff Notes.
Yes, perfect.
Be happy to do that. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
My personal request, though, is that you just keep your meeting space clean.
Now, can we wear, can we wear jeans?
I will be cleaning them all out. When I first got here, I don't think space in my drawer had been cleaned out since 1964. And I'm not kidding.
Responsible for cleaning their own space.
Yeah.
Brummies are nice.
Well, I'll ask you guys to tidy up your room, but. Oh, Rebecca, I know you did it while we were gone, didn't you? You got rid of all those replicates. Next week, next week, everything's going. So we're gonna clean up. Okay.
Perfect.
All right, so just to be clear, you all will get, provide a brief to the trustees. I will say that typically, it's it's tradition that the village president assigns seats. I'm not interested in doing that. I believe the main plates are like out, but I didn't put them in if you guys want to negotiate your spots, your desk mates, or you know, your desk location. That is fine with me. We just are gonna start on time. We're not gonna allow it to slow down. So that would be the only thing. Any other items for future consideration?
What's, what's your, what's your favorite spots? Well, like, what's the prime spot? Yeah, I mean, so we have trustee Warren, Backhorse, and McCag. What would have, would have been your favorite spots to say?
Getting out, getting out early or on time. That's.
I've never changed my, I've never changed my spot. Nope. It's always rotated around me. I have never changed my seat. I've never changed my, I've never changed my spot, nope. It's always rotated around me. I have never changed my seat. Not, I didn't request that. Go ahead.
There are advantages anyway, trustee Stokbrand.
If I wanted to be farthest from the camera, where would that be?
Have a pretty good view from that camera, but it is far enough away, so if you don't.
Where will the cameras be? Are they?
It's, you're just gonna have one that's on the wall, far in the back, and then if you choose to bring your personal device. You'll have your own box like this on Zoom, but it's not a requirement. It's just, it's really your choice.
I think the oldest trustee should get the spot farthest from the camera. I'm just saying.
Longest standing trustee.
I, well, there are two. So I will say, in my opinion, in my experience. The seat that is on the committee room side closest to the audience. Is the hardest to see on camera. I don't know with the new ones, but like you're the least noticeable. So if you just wanna kind of fade into the background, I would go for that seat.
It's also the easiest one to duck out if you need to make a phone call or or do anything in the hallway, so.
It's incidentally, Kathy, if memory serves, that actually is where your, where your, where your name card is. That's actually your seat.
Oh, it's, it's not assigned.
The placard, yeah, the main place is there, and so if you wanna swing by and, you know, you're gonna camp out, that's up to you guys. You can coordinate that. Okay, so did we take a vote on this?
No, but this is the longest discussion we've had all night, so well done, everyone.
Yeah, so what's that? Yeah. Alright, so all those in favor of updating the policy on April fourth?
Wait, didn't we vote on that?
I know.
Oh, sorry.
Did we vote? No, we didn't.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous for April fourth, we'll consider that policy update. Alright, any other future items of consideration, for real? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion by trustee Backhorse, seconded by trustee Ursink, any discussion? Alright, y'all. Then. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
It looks like we are adjourned at eight thirty nine. Enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Hi, everyone.